Alderman Wesley.
I attended two classes. I attended how to pass a referendum for the rating sales tax for the committee. The one thing I learned about that is normally it takes a couple of times to have it pass. And what they recommend that you perform a committee in so many people out each ward to go ahead and support it in each ward. They also say that you should hit any events like Lions Clubs and all that and all your organizations as fast as you can to push it out, to get the word out there. They also said you have to hit with letters and that. We are right on schedule at this time for our referendum, the way we are going with it with the first letter that went out. And the only thing that they really strongly suggest is that the city councils and city people say focus and all together to pass this referendum. It has, this was Oak Forest that passed this referendum, and it took them three times to pass it. But hopefully, we don't have that issue here. They ran into same problem too, is that they ran, they were running out money and they needed money to keep the city running. And obviously now the fuel bills are, you know, electrical's going up, we're going to need a referendum. But they said to have ward meetings, go out and talk to as many people as you can, hit the doors, have a committee to work on the issues and that. And they're passed very well. And the other class I attended was, in the past, we have, we had completed courses of NIMS that we did and 700 selected officials. I attended another lecture on that. Down the line, in the next year or two, we are going to have to complete as elected officials, NIMS 800 now. It is coming right down to get it done. The one thing I learned about this is that they talked about this tornado that hit Springfield and how they operated in this year on a disaster there. I did not know that if a disaster happens here, that if we have volunteers that help us out to clean up the community, that the federal people will pay for the salaries or pay us money back for those volunteers working. I did not know that. I thought volunteers don't get nothing, but we get compensated for all that. I also know is if a disaster happens, we have, we could pick Joe Smo or a tree company down the street, within 72 hours, we do not have to go out for bids and start cleaning up the city at all. We could go to whoever we want. After 72 hours, you must go out for bid. So you have an open checkbook for the federal government to get money when it first happens up to 72 hours. After that, you have to go out for bid. I also learned that FEMA also recommends that you pick three different sites in the community that you could go to when they arrive on the scene. Therefore, they have a command center that could go right there and set up. So they recommend that we pick three areas in the town. Yeah, their town might get completely wiped off the map, but they recommend picking three different locations on each end of town to continue. But, I mean, it was us bringing up in speed that 800 will be coming down for us to keep in line, to be able to get those federal grants. And industry know that they went online, the guy did the presentation, out of all the towns in DuPage County, there is only four towns that are up to snog with NIMS right now. So those four towns, he didn't say what four towns, but I just hope, we are there. And I've been talking, Frank, and I think we are in there for the grant. So we've been keeping on top of it. So that's a plus for us. And it's, 800 will be there, though. Thank you.
Alderman Coles?
All right. I went to one of the meetings called impact fees, developing impact fees. In that, we have to change our impact fees to all the builders. Because the impact fees which we're getting now are only good, and this was on schools, and the amount of money that we're getting for schools is only for the elementary school. It don't, the impact fees do not consider middle schools and high schools, which the students in the town will continue on. So we have to come up with some kind of an idea on, which they didn't say, they left it up to the individuals to come up with some kind of an impact fee that'll, for the schools that'll take care of the children from elementary, junior high school, and high school. And they suggested that we start looking into that because the impact fees that are normally charged by the towns and the cities are too small for what the builders are getting away with. And of course, the mayor of Mundeline switched, after he retired from being a mayor, switched over to the building, builders, and he's working for the builders now. So I was really surprised that, I didn't know that. And I'm glad I went to that meeting. And then I had another meeting about dogs. Now, you're going to say, well, why dogs? Well, you're hearing people getting bitten by dogs, stray dogs, or it's two or three dogs that are together, and they get a hold of somebody, and it's an unleashed, unleashed dogs. Well, the police department, excuse me, Frank, I mean, Frank, but the police department actually doesn't want to go after dogs because it's not a crime. And the police department, the policemen don't get any credit if they take in a dog. Our state's attorney don't want to prosecute anybody that's had a dog bite. And I was really surprised how many dog bites there are in the United States. You wouldn't believe, there's somewhere around 30, 40,000 dog bites a year. And I was shocked when the woman said that. And it doesn't matter if it's a rottweiler or it's a pit bull, it could be a dog that weighs four pounds, and they still got to be considered dangerous. Any dog is dangerous. They go back to the wild, they're back, they go into the wild stage, and when they, when they get excited, and they can bite anybody. That's, thank you.
Alderman Shockey?
The programs I found interesting were three of them especially. Number one, recent changes in zoning laws. A court case had turned a formerly open, interactive zoning process into a potential mini-trial for the retention of court reporters and expert witnesses and the need for exhaustive, expensive studies with the goal of perfect record. The goal of this zoning change that was done was to restore the legislative nature of the zoning process. In other words, for instance, a contractor will state his case, the citizens who are against it will state their case, and the committee votes on the proposed zoning change. Judicial review still can be filed, but no longer than 90 days afterwards. Otherwise, the decision stands as voted upon, so it makes it simple again. The second program was on identifying and avoiding conflicts of interest. And this was interesting in that they had a large municipal law firm, had their lawyers up there talking and play-acting different cases, a number of different ways. But the ones that were really interesting were the four basic points that we need to follow to avoid the possibility of civil or criminal charges. And number one is an elected official of any board must publicly disclose any conflict of interest. We do that. The individual, this individual cannot take part in the discussion, nor can the person vote on the item involved. The individual does not have to leave a seat or the room during the discussion or the vote, but if they do want to, they can. And importantly, the individual that cannot have a private discussion with any other board members on the matter at hand. In other words, he can't sit down with them ahead of time and talk to them about it. If he has a conflict of interest, he's not supposed to talk to the other alderman for instance here about it. They also discussed simultaneously holding multiple offices. They discussed the Gift Act, which was replaced by the Employee and Officials Ethics Act of 2003. They discussed the authority to issue oral changes, change orders to public contracts and the limits involved, and the renewal of franchise agreements. The third one was of a different sort of thing. And along with the mayor and the police department and the fire department and others in the city, I as mayor pro tem is part of a team that reports to the State Office of Emergency Management, which was created by the Home, Office of Homeland Defense, and have the responsibility to develop response plans to any emergencies that may occur within our area. And the title of this program was a municipal response to a pandemic. The reason I attended this program that is because that they discussed what role a municipality plays when faced with a potential influenza pandemic, and how state, county, and municipal governments will work together to make our communities safe. I was able to see firsthand how others form their plans and their operational items. We were briefed on how Cook County would respond and found that like DuPage County, prophylactic drugs would be distributed within 48 hours of an event occurring, and they would be distributed at pre-designated centers. For instance, Chicago has about four dozen sites. DuPage County has approximately a dozen sites. They would, these sites would distribute medications with the goal of reaching all the residents within a maximum of four days. Wooddale and other municipalities routinely have been, have what are called tabletop scenarios, which are monitored by the DuPage Health Department to see how we respond to events that they give us. These plans are reviewed by the Office of Emergency Management and continually upgraded to fine-tune our plans. Wooddale is at least even in preparedness, I found, to other communities in the state. Plus, we do have an advantage of having over 40 certs, certs as citizens' emergency response teams. We have over, with the new class, over 40 cert members who can assist our police and fire departments to serve the needs of our citizens. So when it comes to emergency procedures, because of any kind of event, the city is up to par, at least up to par as any other city in Illinois, and we continue to have additional tabletops and additional scenarios to keep up the date on it and make sure that we're prepared for anything that might happen. By the way, does anybody know what the difference between an epidemic and a pandemic is? A pandemic is a, is a disease problem within a specific geographic area. And one more thing I did is I went into the internet and looked up the avian pandemic and found a new booklet that was just published in August on good home treatment of influenza. And I'm, we made copies of that, and I'll pass those down to everybody for their own use at home. And we might want to keep a couple of copies at City Hall for any citizens that would like them as well. Thank you.
Any comments or questions?
I do have some other items under Mayor's report.
Well, I went, I also went to the clerks and a couple, but the main thing I went to was the clerks. And with that, we were doing FOIA's, which of course are Freedom of Information Acts. We were, and that's, that could be a whole day session on that. We also did an awful lot of talking about the execution, executive session and the procedure in there, what should be and what shouldn't be. And they talked about raising fees. For instance, vendor fees, I find out, you can only raise $25 max. I didn't know that. So it was very informative. I, I like going there. You learn a lot, you learn a lot from the people that you're just talking to outside of the sessions. You're welcome.
Also under Mayor's report, I had the opportunity this morning to talk to Chairman Schillerstrom, and we discussed the Bussy Woods Dam modification. You may recall, this is something they talked about for the last 20 years. Originally, it was going to be a box beam across the top to restrict the wear. Now they're talking about an inflatable bladder, of all things. It has been ordered by DuPage County. Cook County has agreed to install it. They are awaiting, however, a state permit, and they can't proceed without it. And the state people are now working on removing the dams over on the Fox River, so they're expecting that to be delayed. But it looks like after 20 years that that's finally going to be done, and DuPage County is going to pay for it. Alderman Tolemy?
I have to, I have to comment on that. You know, it's hysterical because, again, it's the bureaucracy, this is a pure case of bureaucracy. This thing, DuPage County got involved back in 2000 with this, where they were going to pay for it, to do it, in Cook County. And Cook County said, yeah, no problem, no problem. And then all of a sudden, there was this, all the politics got involved, and, you know, before too long, they weren't going to do it. And, you know, I, all I can say is, when it gets done, I'll believe it. Because I, at this point, you know, they can, they can talk a good talk, but until they show that they can walk, I mean, I don't believe it's going to happen. You know, I hate to say it, but I really don't. There's just too much politics involved in it.
Facetiously, you're on the same page as Chairman Schillerstrom. His final comment was that he hopes it will get done within the next 20 years. The Chamber Luncheon this coming Thursday, October 12th, is going to be on the subject of what's happening in Wooddale. As alderman, you are all invited to attend and give any input at that meeting. It's going to be interactive question-answer format, so you're welcome to attend. Also want to remind everybody of the Police Open House, which is this Saturday, October 7th, from 12 to 4 o'clock PM at the police station. There'll be a K-9 demo, kids activities, police vehicle display, child safety, seat checks. The sheriff SWAT unit will be here, there'll be a raffle conducted, refreshments, McGruff the Crime Dog will be there, DUI goggles, if you haven't done that, that's kind of an interesting experience. And range demo, do we get to shoot on the range, chief? I don't think so. Is there free taser demonstrations? Alderman Tolemy wants to know. Also want to remind everybody, there's a Fire Department Open House the following day on Sunday, from 12 to 4:00. This would be at the South Fire Station for their recently remodeled work that they've done there. That's going to be open to the public as well. Committee meetings next Thursday. Frank and I and two aldermen are not going to be there. Do we have six people who are going to be here next Thursday? Is there anybody else who is not attending? Okay, very good. We'll go forward with that. And I noticed in front of us, we have a personnel policy. I take it we are supposed to sign this and return it to the city clerk or to the manager?
Yes, that's, that's a recent update of all our personnel policies and procedures. It should be all up to date, and we would like everyone to have a copy of it. And if there's any other questions on that or suggestions, we're already starting the next phase of the revision. It will be an ongoing plan to revise as laws change and requirements change.
So if you will all sign the cover sheet on the front page there and turn that into the city clerk at your convenience, that would be appreciated. That concludes my report. Mr. Manager?
I have one item, Mr. Mayor. It concerns a water billing insert. The city of Wooddale, along with 37 other communities, outsources our water billing. It's a cost-saving measure. City staff was looking into the idea of possibly putting in an extra insert in the water billing. We've had several inquiries as to the cost. Since some communities allow this, it's a way they can offset mailing costs for our residents. And, but before the city council adopted an official policy, an insert inadvertently got into the last water billing. I received a couple of calls on it, and I explained it, and they weren't too worried about it. However, it was, it wasn't, and it shouldn't have been done. This was a result of a miscommunication between staff. Instead of just determining a cost of a page, a half a page, or a small insert, a staff member thought it was ready to go. And as city manager, I'm responsible for the air, and I apologize. We will not allow any additional inserts unless the city council adopts a policy to allow it as a way to cut costs to our residents. And so again, I apologize, and I'm sorry. When we have this happen offsite, we don't always get to review everything. And the people that I did talk to, I explained it to them, and they, and they felt that if it was going to help save money, it wasn't a bad, a bad idea. We had a couple of people who wanted to get involved in it. But until we're ready to really give you a report and you adopt a policy, we won't be doing that. I just wanted to explain it in case any of the council members get a call on it or any citizen has any questions about how that happened.
Alderman Subak?
We should in the future have set a policy because it can be an effective tool for, if there's a non-for-profit group, if there's a, the Chamber of Commerce wants to do, you know, or advertising the Summer Fest, something like that. So I think there are positives. So I think we should in the future discuss that and set a policy on how we're going to address that.
I think we're going to add that to a future Finance Committee agenda. I don't know if it's this coming Thursday or a month or two to get staff getting ready. So include your report?
Concludes my report.
There are no, are there any other further questions on that, comments? There are no items on the consent agenda? Community and Economic Development, Alderman Tolemy?
No report.
Finance and Administration, Alderman Winger?
No report.
Public Health, Safety and Judiciary, Alderman Pizak?
Yes, I have one item that was, came to the committee on September 14th, and it was approved at that time, and I will deliver it in a motion right now to approve an intergovernmental agreement between the city of Wooddale and the Wooddale Park District for the provision of certain police services, which includes full crossing guards and bank runs by the, provided by the police department.
Say a second? On the question? Roll call?
Alderman Coles?
Yes.
Alderman Subak?
Yes.
Alderman Knite?
Yes.
Alderman Pizak?
Yes.
Alderman Shockey?
Yes.
Alderman Winger?
Yes.
Alderman Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Tolemy?
Yes.
That passes?
That concludes my report.
Planning zoning and building, Alderman Knite?
No report.
Public Works, Alderman Subak?
No report.
Under other business, may I motion to approve an ordinance amending Municipal Code Chapters 10 and 11 regarding fees charged for zoning and subdivision requests? Is there such a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second? On the question? On the question, I have one. On the fees for ZBA standard variance and ZBA special hearing, I recall some discussion as we were eliminating the court reporter, and that would result in a fee reduction for our residents. That doesn't seem to be reflected here. Did we decide we were doing that or not doing that? Or can somebody update me what status of that is? Mr. Noack?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. We are eliminating the court reporter due to the fact that we, we tape the individual sessions, and that will control the costs for any additional increases within the near future.
So is the thought that if that gets eliminated, these first two items, the fees will be reduced at a future date? Are we going to let that stand as is?
I think, I think that before that would happen, we would have to see how the other fees might be affected. There is always a possibility of the increase in the publication fees and things along those lines. I think that if we use this as a test period for the next few months and see how that, that actually affects, again, the costs, we can certainly come back to council and advise.
Thank you, Ms. Noack. Alderman Shockey?
Yes, I had, when we discussed this before, I had asked if staff could look into the idea of having a additional fees tacked on to the variance application fee if the resident was neglectful and not doing the work that they should have done. I understand there was a case that we had that cost over 12, cost staff, or cost the city over $1,200, and then when we were only charging 550. And I was, I thought that the staff was going to come back with something to suggest about that kind of an application where they keep coming and making changes that cost us money far beyond what our regular fee schedule is.
Mr. Noack?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Alderman Shockey, that is actually being taken care of as we speak with regard to the required escrow deposits. We had made the adjustment, and any time that we do have those overruns or so prior to any approvals or moving forward on a project, as approved, they must pay that, those fees that I haven't been incurred. So that's already been done.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Alderman Knite?
Yeah, and one of the memos we received here about the elimination of the court reporter, it says that the attorney would like to discuss that at the ZBA prior to council, eliminating the court reporter. Is that correct?
Mr. Bond?
Yeah, this was a, would be an amendment to the text, and under the rules you're required, the ZBA is required to have addressed that. It's my understanding the ZBA did not address that particular issue. So as to, only as to the issue of the court reporter, that would first have to be brought to the ZBA. The council always has the option to disagree with the determination or the recommendation of the ZBA as a recommending body, but it is first required to go there for presentation, discussion, and some, some recommendation from them.
Alderman Tolemy?
I'm not an attorney, but I do have a question. Why would, why would we have to send that to the ZBA first? I mean, is it because it's part of an existing ordinance that, so in order to affect a change to that ordinance, it has to go back as a text amendment?
Mr. Bond?
That's correct.
Anything further? Alderman Wesley?
Well...
I'm sorry, let's go, finish with Alderman first.
Yeah. So are we going to put this back to the ZBA then, just as soon as possible? Because it, I mean, at this point, the council's already voted on it. We voted to eliminate it. So I mean, I would think that it should be able to go back to them as quickly as possible as a text amendment and come back because they'll probably vote against it, and we'll have to override it?
Ms. Noack?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. With, with respect to the court reporter, even though the zoning ordinance is written with the statement in there, and the knowledge that if certain portions of the text are required to be amended, they must pass through the, the process through the Zoning Board of Appeals and Plan Commission as a text amendment to approve those conditions. Except, we've had experience that the city council has the ultimate authority with regard to policies and procedures, that when they set those particular policies and procedures in place, they don't necessarily or do not need the approval of the Zoning Board of Appeals because you are the ultimate authority. So there's a little bit of a disagreement.
Alderman Tolemy?
I think to be on the safe side, though, I mean, Roger, and I'm not saying you're right, and I'm not saying, you know, Pat's right, who's right, but, you know, Pat is our, I mean, is our city attorney, and I respect his judgment on, you know, what we should do. And if it means we have to send it back through the ZBA, you know, as a text amendment, we should do that. However, again, as I stated, I mean, I think that we should do it as quickly as possible, and irregardless of what the outcome is, you know, hopefully, they will approve, approve it, you know, so that we could get it back as quickly as possible, so that we can affect that change and get it out of, you know, get it actually out of the ordinance. You know, because it kind of goes back to what we've talked about with these, even with these fees. What we're trying to do, right, what we're trying to do is put in as appendices so that there are certain things that, you know, ultimately, they have to come back to the council anyway. We might as well, if you can put them in as appendices, why go through that extra process if legally, you know, according to state, you don't really have to, as long as it's not within, you know, and it's not constructed or construed within the ordinance? So I think let's do this, and let's just try and get it done as quick as possible.
I couldn't agree with you more, Alderman Tolemy. It, it could be on the November 20th agenda for the ZBA.
That's, if that's the soonest, then that's...
That's as soon as, soon as we can get it on, and...
And we could have it back to co, can we, let me ask the, can I ask the city attorney this? Instead of going through committee, then, could it come back directly to the council?
Mr. Bond?
You can direct it to be brought back directly to the council.
Okay, then if I could, I'd like to make a motion or whatever, send it to the, to the recommendation?
December 7.
Right. Send it to, to the board on November 20th and bring it back to the council on December 7th. Directly at council on December 7th. Why go through the, why wait any longer? I mean, we all are already agreed to do it. November 20th is the first date that the ZBA can hear it, and then we would get it back on December 7th. Why waste the time?